Welcome, everyone, to the meeting today of February 25th, 2014. Mayor Schneider is in Washington, DC, so I'll be sitting in for her. And would you join me, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart, Hotchkiss, Rouse.
Here.
White, Mayor Protem Mario.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Okay. Are there changes to the agenda, Mr. Armstrong?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you. We move to public comment, and folks have two minutes to speak. Let's see, two, three. We have several speakers, so we're happy to hear from you. Clint Orr will be our first speaker, followed by Robert Burke. Welcome, Mr. Orr. Go ahead, please.
What you have in front of you is a rendering of the former microphone for him. A new rendering, there we go. Councilpeople.
You can start again, please, thank you.
Start over. Members of the Santa Barbara City Council, good evening or afternoon. My name is Clint Orr, and what you have in front of you is a rendering that I've drawn of the airport honky-tonk as an use for the elephant bar. Now, as you can see, if we take out the kitchen, it provides for a large main dance floor, along with a classroom off the left and a patio in the back. This would provide 5,000 square feet of actual dance space where you could put 500 people at one time in a venue in Santa Barbara County, unheard of in this county. I've seen it in every other county, but not here. So this is a plan that I hope that we'll be able to provide an educational and a recreational facility for our kids and our grandkids. That location used to have the theater, the drive-in, and so it's a good location, bus-wise, transportation-wise, and I think it's the right place to put in a dance hall in this community, and I'd like to have it reviewed in depth. And I believe I can get the funding to get this thing together and run as a nonprofit. Now, I think it's the highest and best use of the property. The renovations be minimal. We would drop the liquor license and just put in beer and wine. There'd be no kitchen. So we might have a catering truck in the back. If not here, where? If not now, when? And if not me, who? It's time for us to take a little action and have some habitat for couples to dance in Santa Barbara County, and this is the location to do it. I hope to see if we can't get it open, gosh, if we can get an agreement going down in the next 60, 90 days, we'd have it open maybe July or August, and have a location that's a world-class facility for couples' dance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Orr. Robert Burke will be followed by Brandon Morris.
Madam Mayor Protem, members, my name is Robert Burke. This is drought talk. It has been said that people are panicking because of the drought. Some are dancing for rain. We, members of the species Homo sapiens, in the current phase of our spiritual development, are intent upon "my will be done." We see ourselves as separate from nature. In our most current times, we are still struggling between control over nature and cooperation with nature. The meek have already inherited the earth; the strong are still struggling for it. Mother Nature knows how to handle the weather better than I do. The seemingly bad and the seemingly good are all useful for our spiritual development. The drought allows us to be reminded that we have no control over people, places, and things. So we have choices: fear or love, anxiety or acceptance, dread or serenity. Taking action for future possible consequences is appropriate, but today, we have enough water, and we function the same as if it were usual times. I welcome the drought. I embrace the blessings that it has brought us to cultivate a gratitude attitude towards the planet we live on. We are creatures apart of nature, not apart from. We can now experience grace, reverence, and humility. Has not each one of us encountered dire straits that rearranged our self-centered thinking? I believe the way to receive the drought is to prepare for when we complain of too much rain. Shall we not prepare what to do with too much water so that for the next drought, we have more options than paying for no water? I suggest the way to celebrate the drought is to take a shower with a friend. Councilmembers.
Thank you. Mr. Morris, followed by Phil Walker, please.
So today, I'll be much quicker than I normally am. I actually had a real quick question for you, Mr. Hotchkiss. Recently, in the news, you said that the gang injunction would be a benefit, and from your experience in real estate, that you could see how people in real estate could spin this as being a positive. It was something that I was really kind of curious about, and I was hoping that you might be able to clarify those comments. It's been my understanding that whenever you go to sell a piece of property, there's a questionnaire that you have to fill out by law, right? And one of those questions is, do you know if there's any neighborhood noise problems or other nuisances? And I'm, again, I'm not really that versed with real estate, so I figured with your expertise, you could help clarify this for me a little bit. Wouldn't the gang injunction qualify as a nuisance that would have to be declared whenever you're selling your property? And it's because it says later, if you answer yes of any of these questions, please, you know, attach additional sheets. And so to me, it would say that if the city is claiming that 30% of our city is engulfed in a nuisance, that that would be something that would have to be declared whenever you're trying to sell that property. So the other thing is, is that it seems that there's been a lot of interest in this gang injunction issue, and I'm actually a little disappointed that the mayor's not here, because I am Vice President of Alpha Beta Chapter Sigma Kaida Communications Honor Society. And one of the things that we're talking about doing this semester is to host a debate. And part of that is going to be a smaller aspect of an overarching theme of human rights. So what I was wanting to do was to invite anyone from the city council that actually might want to take a little bit of time out of their day and take a serious discussion and debate the issue. Thank you for your time, have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Phil Walker is next, and Terry Gray will be our last public speaker.
Good afternoon, City Council, back once again. I'm still a little bit confused with the walls, fences, and hedges ordinance, and hopefully it'll work out. It's still a work in progress. You know, if there's no safety concerns, no demonstrated or record of a pedestrian strike on the sidewalk, if the chain link fence is clear, nothing growing on it, visibility, there's no question of opacity as far as vis-à-vis the car driver seeing the pedestrian and/or stroller, children on the sidewalk, it works. That's all I'm trying to say. The best thing about steel, it does not provide a fire pathway. That's been demonstrated during the Hesoceta and T-fire. Wood and synthetic fences provide a wildland fire pathway, sometimes involving structures. One other quick thing, I brought it before the city council a number of times during Mayor Bloom's watch, you know, bring the D-SAL plant a little bit closer to turning on the switch, and it looks like it's getting there. And my concern was not drought at that point, it was concerns of a major seismic event. A skid-mounted, partially D-SAL plant, you could probably get it up and running within a short period of time, as opposed to the standard reservoir and distribution system. So it's a good thing to have, and it looks like it's going that route. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
In the hedge and wall and so-on situation, I didn't, I came after you had been talking, but I was told by people there that you didn't, that you didn't speak much about the grandfathering situation. I'd like to tell you that most of us bought our houses after 1957, and I think to hold people to a standard of having to prove the condition of our hedges since that time, in 1957, at this time, which is in the next century altogether, would be a pretty unreasonable thing to do. If you're going, if you're going to have a rule about all this, I do believe that the grandfathering should be as of right now. If you're going to do it, you shouldn't go backwards, even though you did have an ordinance that started in 1957. Right now, we're people that are being affected that were probably not here in 1957, so it's the current composition of the city that I think you need to be thinking about now. Second thing, what happens if you sell your house or request a permit? They all say that it's not intended to be enforced unless, unless there's a complaint. It would be not enforced, but I have seen them enforce this, this 1957 thing when people want to sell their houses. And what if you wanted to get a permit? What would they do? Go around and, because they can, because they have the structure in place, would they just go around and measure your hedges and say, oh, sorry, you can't have the permit for the storage unit in your backyard until you cut your hedges down, things like that? Okay? Sorry. And what about the costs of all this? You have to pay the city. You have to pay for their time as well when you do request any kind of a modification. I know you have to pay them. Why not let just the mediation boards take care of it? Why not put the hedges into the, into the view and solar ordinance area, and then possibly, I know my time's up, right?
I miss out, and you can have your say when the hedge ordinance comes back to the city council.
I know.
We depend on you to be here.
I just wanted to put these thoughts in your head, so you'd be thinking about it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk?
Item two, Acceptance of Meter Easements for 901 Olive Street and 34 West Victoria Street, recommending that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara accepting an agreement for access to water meters and sub-meters and grant of easement, and an agreement for access to water meter room and grant of easement.
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's passed. Mr. Francisco, do you have a report from the Finance Committee, please?
As a matter of fact, I do. The Finance Committee met today and heard the mid-year financial report and accepted recommendations from the Finance Department on mid-year budget adjustments. We recommended those to the full council. We also heard a discussion of the new banking services agreement and recommended the council accept that as well.
Did you miss me on the Finance Committee? I know you did.
Terribly.
Okay. And the Chair of the Ordinance Committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. I didn't miss you on the Ordinance Committee because you were there, and we managed to forward a recommendation to council for the upcoming agenda item, and we will deal with the hedge and fence ordinance. Vote was two to one. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is item number 10.
Fiscal year 2014 mid-year review.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Julie Nemus. I'm the County Manager for the Finance Department. Today, I and Jeanne Wilson, the Treasury Manager, we will be presenting the mid-year financial review for fiscal year 2014. As Councilmember Dale Francisco mentioned, we already presented this to the Finance Committee. We will be presenting a general overview of general fund revenues, general fund expenditures, and the enterprise funds. We won't be going into the proposed budget adjustments in detail, as we did that at the Finance Committee, but in your council agenda and the attached report, there are the detailed budget adjustments, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Today, we'll be going over the general fund revenues, and Jeanne Wilson will be going over that. I'll be presenting the general fund expenditures, the enterprise funds, and then answering any questions you have on the proposed budget adjustments. So now I'll be passing it off to Jeanne Wilson, who will be going over the general fund revenues.
Thank you, Julie. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem Mario and council members. Again, my name is Jeanne Wilson, Treasury Manager in the Finance Department. First slide, we'll present a slide and summary of tax revenues for the city for the first six months of, of the year, the fiscal year. Overall, general fund revenues appear to be trending as expected, based on our analysis of three-year averages. The first slide, again, is, is a summary of tax revenues, and overall, these revenues are trending, although not at 50%, even though we're halfway through the year, they do trend to our three-year averages, since these revenues are not received evenly throughout the year. Sales taxes are slightly below the year-to-date budget by $268,000. However, on a year, through December 31st, they're just about $81,000 above last year's returns. We do expect these figures and a, and a budget to actual below of about $270,000 at the end of the year. This is primarily due to sales tax at the end of last fiscal year coming in a little lower than we anticipated. Property taxes are, at this point, $147,000, almost $148,000 over budget. We do have good news with property tax. Based on increased assessed valuation, actual revenues will be coming in slightly higher than we originally budgeted. We expect at the end of the year to be about $780,000 over budget in the property tax UUT is trending, and we expect to meet our budget of 3.5 million, or 6.9 million at the end of the year. TOT is trending at the three-year average. We expect that this category, by the end of this fiscal year, will be about $160,000 over budget. The figures you see before you on this slide do not include the last two months of TOT returns. Those last two months were, were significant increases. Business licenses are trending a little higher as well. This is primarily due to a timing issue of when the renewals were issued this year. We went a little earlier this year, therefore, most of the renewals came in, in the December timeframe, as opposed to January of last fiscal year. The next slide summarizes other revenues, and in this category, both fines and forfeitures and franchise fees are trending at the 50% mark, or at at about the 50% mark through half the year. Intergovernmental revenues, you'll see a significant increase or a significant year-to-date variance, over $700,000 of variance of budget, actuals over budget. This is primarily due to fire mutual aid reimbursements that were received in the first six months of the year. Fire estimated these at about $400,000, however, the figure is closer to $800,000 received to date. In addition, Library also brought in a $65,000 grant in this category. The overall miscellaneous revenues on the next slide are trending slightly above the budget. The categories miscellaneous revenues, the most significant category you'll see on the slide is indirect allocations. Indirect allocation represents the largest component and represent reimbursements for administrative services or overhead to other departments. Operating transfers in are the revenues from waterfront for parks, maintenance, street sweeping, revenues for police enforcement, payments made from downtown association for downtown streets maintenance, and some traffic safety funds for police operations. Then the last slide summarizes our fees and service charges. These are the various fees that the departments charge for services provided to the community. As you can see, community development revenues are below year-to-date at about $148,000. This is primarily due to decline in building activity. This number can fluctuate. Again, it is, it is strictly based on the activity of building, activity in community development in the community. Parks and recreation fees also show a decline a year-to-date below budget actuals. Parks and revenues, parks and recreation fees are generally seasonal. Most of those fees are received either in the first quarter of the fiscal year and the last quarter of the fiscal year, since it is kind of summer-based. So we expect to meet these budget figures by the end of the year. As you can see, on a, on a prior-year basis, we are trending above where we were a year ago this time. Final category are the interfund charges, and those are the charges to other funds for general fund work orders, for things such as engineering services, and charges to the airport for fire department support costs. That concludes the analysis of revenues for the general fund, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I think we're good.
I'm going to now talk about general fund expenditures. I'm going to be focusing on the year-to-date variance. We do adjust the year-to-date budget for seasonality. I'm going to be focusing on the large variances and also the negative variances. The first one I'd like to talk about is police. As of 12/31, police is showing about $194,000 variance, a negative variance. This is largely due to overtime costs. In the past, vacancies have offset a lot of these overtime costs, but in the current year, due to staffing being, majority of the positions being filled, it hasn't been able to offset these overtime costs. So Police Department is closely monitoring these costs to see if additional cost reductions will be needed in the second half, or even potential additional requests for appropriations at third quarter. The next variance is negative $286,000 for fire. We mentioned this at first quarter, and Jeanne touched on this as well. This is related to mutual aid costs and revenues. These costs are completely offset by additional mutual aid revenues. So this is going to be offset at year-end. We'll be coming back at fiscal year-end and asking for an adjustment in both estimated revenues and appropriations. The next variance is, it's a very slight variance, it's about $34,000 negative. This is due to some additional slight variances in supplies and services. However, Library is coming in under 50% at, at mid-year, and they're expected to come in under budget by the end of the year. Community development is coming actually under budget by about $421,000. This is due to some timing differences in payments, as well as some salary savings from hourly positions and leaves of, leave of absences, and they're expected to have some savings by year-end, but some differences will even out in the second half of the year. The next one is community promotion. This is, right now, about a $370,000 positive variance at 12/31, and this is almost completely due to a timing difference for the annual contract with the Santa Barbara Conference and Visitors Bureau for the film, to promote tourism for the city. The payment in the current year was made in January, as opposed to December in the prior year. Overall, the general fund is coming in under budget by about $814,000. So the departments are actually meeting budget at 12/31. The only department that we are closely monitoring at this time is going to be Police, and we will be watching them over the next couple of months and seeing whether or not they want to come back at third quarter to request additional appropriations for that overtime. Any questions before I move on? Okay. I'm going to move on to enterprise funds. In the report that we provided to you, we go into a lot of the variances. There are quite a few variances, mostly positive. I'm going to be focusing on the large year-to-date variances, more than 5%. The first one is solid waste. The expenditures are over date by about $270,000 at 12/31. This is primarily due to a timing difference as well. It's a difference in the semi-annual payment for about $270,000 for the regional fees paid for the county for waste management services. This is a payment in January versus December, so this will even out at year-end as well. The next one is the water fund. The expenses are actually coming in under budget by about $3.1 million. Part of this is related to timing differences, a difference regarding debt service payments. Also, there has been a delay in the startup and running of the Ortega groundwater well plant. It was budgeted about $1 million, only $160,000 spent as of 12/31. However, Public Works does feel that those costs will be spent in the second half for the Ortega well, as well as potentially additional costs for the running of the Ortega well. They also believe there will be some additional costs related to the drought in the second half of the year. They are analyzing those costs, and they may come back at third quarter or on their own to potentially ask for additional appropriations, or be reprogramming savings from other appropriations to cover drought costs in the second half of the year. The next variance is in the wastewater fund of about $1.2 million. This is related to, partially related to a timing difference for estate revolving loan payments that has been delayed. It's, there was additional timing related to the application process, as well as some across-the-board savings, as they do budget pretty conservatively. They are expecting to see some savings at year-end. The next variance is related to the airport fund. Right now, revenues are trending below budget at 12/31. This is due to two commercial property vacancies. Expenses for airport are coming in over budget of about $740,000. This is entirely due to timing differences in how the capital program is funded and how debt is funded. This will even out over the second half of the fiscal year, and they're expected to come in at budget at year-end. And the last one I'd like to discuss is the golf fund. It's a small amount, but I wanted to touch on it because it's about $20,000 over budget for expenses, because it's related to high water costs due to the dry season. And the way Golf Fund is managing this is that they've actually reduced their turf equipment replacement program and reallocated those appropriations to offset the high water costs, and they've done that in the second half of the year as well. Any questions before? Actually, this is, since we're not going into all of the individual budget requests, this would conclude my presentation. Any questions on these?
Any of my colleagues have questions? Oh, okay. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you. Hazel is here, so maybe this is for her. The projected loss of American Eagle, what effect after April 1st will that have on the financial picture? Can we predict that at all?
Mayor Protem Mario and Councilman Hotchkiss, as you know, we learned that yesterday, and we are, at this time, looking at our revenues and expenditures. There will be an impact. I'm not exactly sure exactly how much between now and the end of the year, but we are looking at it.
I'd sort of pop that one on you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Does this need a motion? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion, please?
So moved.
That we've heard the budget, we've accepting the fiscal year financial statements?
We're approving the mid-year adjustments.
And we're approving the mid-year adjustments.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 11, please.
Capital Improvement Project's second-quarter report for fiscal year 2014.
Okay, and it looks like Mr. Kelly is here to give us our report.
Mayor Protem Mario. Good afternoon. I'm pleased to be here today to give you a snapshot of the city's capital program, which involves most all city funds and city departments. As a snapshot, not all the projects that the city, not all the work is described, however, in the capital program. It is intended, however, to give you a good idea of the scale and scope of the work within the city's capital program and the city's infrastructure. I'll be talking about completed projects, projects in progress, and then also design status. The Council General Report summarizes the work in the first and second quarters. Five projects were completed in the first quarter with a value of over $24 million. The Cater Water Treatment Plant ozone project itself is over 21. Attachment 1 in the Council General Report shows the five projects having notices of completion filed in the second quarter. Their value or total project cost was over $8.7 million. So you can see it as a wide variety of projects we'll be talking about. This map shows, if you can see it, it's at large scale, that there are 10 locations of the, of the projects in the first two quarters, and you can see it's spread throughout the city. This is a significant pavement maintenance project, as well as here, this is the Fish Passage project I'll be talking about later. Passage project I'll be talking about later. This pavement maintenance project consisted of pavement crack sealing, sertic sealing, a rejuvenating cape seal, and traffic striping of various roads throughout the city. You can see the difference between before and after. This project, this completed project consisted of pavement rehabilitation at the airport of run, of taxiways HJNC, which primarily serve general aircraft, general aviation aircraft. The taxiways had not been, had had major maintenance in the last 10 to 15 years and were in poor condition. The pavement rehab included complete reconstruction in some locations and grinding overlay in others. This is a pretty interesting project. The Fish Passage project completed in the existing flood control channel between Ariaga and Cana Perdido Street provides conditions for the migration of steelhead trout, an endangered species. The majority of the funding was provided by grants from the California Department of Fish and Game. And what's really interesting is that this all was modeled to show that the fish can pass and, and not impair any of the height of the existing flood-carrying capacity of the existing channel. And here we have weers that were installed to provide some roughness to the water so the fish can pass. And I like to call these little fish motels, so that the fish have a place to stop and rest as they go up the creek. I'm not sure if Creeks Division would appreciate that, but we'll find out. There are currently 15 construction contracts in progress at estimated value of over $19 million. Again, attachment, there's attachment in the council gen report, attachment 4, which summarizes the distribution of work between city funds and, between the city funds. I'll be featuring five projects in today's presentation. Also, on the city's website at santabarbara.gov, in the Public Works Department, there, we have info on, regarding other capital improvement projects for detail and review. We just recently had a ribbon cutting for this. This is a picture of the grant-funded Chapala Bridge replacement, which was just recently completed, a little bit ahead of schedule. The work started in June. Its design was coordinated with the future Mission Creek Flood Control Project, which is a culvert that will be over here on the east side. And once that culvert is completed, we'll finish the curb and gutter construction here, and also provides for undergrounding of utilities. I believe it includes the removal of this pole. Here's an overhead of the grant-funded Punta Gorda Bridge, and this little bad boy right here was originally a pole in the middle of the creek. It was a significant amount of work, and Edison ran into some construction difficulties, and because of that, it delayed the start of construction, so we ran out of time to complete the bridge. So, we had to winterize the site, and we're planning to come back this summer to complete the bridge. This is the pavement maintenance project, consisted of repairing local distresses and resealing roadways throughout the city. It encompassed work throughout the town, including State Street, Garden Street, and De La Vina Street. Also covered a significant portion of Alameda Parde Sera and Alston Road. And in fact, the last punch list on the project was this completed. Also, a project, an element of this project which got some positive publicity was the restriping of Haley Street, which provides a new bike lane all the way from Chapala to just past Milpis Street.
Mr. Kelly, are you hearing good things about that? Because I am. A lot of the bike people are just loving that Haley Street bike corridor now.
Yeah, I used it the other day, and it was very comfortable. It was very nice. I think the Bike Coalition wrote a very nice letter to the mayor or to the council.
Good. Congratulations on that.
Yeah, our new collaborative effort between transportation planning and our traffic engineer, and always looking at opportunities like that. Waterline construction is underway to replace over two and a half mi, almost two and a half miles of potable waterline at various locations throughout the city. It included, work rather, work already completed included a pilot project to rehabilitate four blocks of waterline using a new 3M company spray-on liner as a pilot project to explore ways to minimize the impact of waterline construction. Because you can see, you know, the traffic detour, et cetera. So, this was, much like we do for sewer lining, it was an idea that we tried to line the waterline from the interior to minimize the inconvenience of, to the motorists of the necessary infrastructure improvements. This project is scheduled to be completed in the next several months. And this is another project we had a recent ribbon cutting on, and it's a grant-funded project to place approximately 85,000 square feet of permeable concrete pavers in four parking lots throughout the city. The construction is designed to capture and treat rainfall and the runoff from the rainfall, which demonstrates one of the best management practices, or BMPs, to meet the city's stormwater management program requirements. And I believe-
Mr. Kelly, we have a question?
Yes.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Ms. Mario. Mr. Kelly, the funding for that project, was that all Measure B, or was that mixed in with some grant funding as well?
I think it was mostly grant-funded.
Mostly grant-funded?
Yes. Creeks is amazingly successful getting these, and I think one of the reasons is the coordination between Creeks and Public Works to get these projects out and show that we can deliver the projects. Because they are not as easy as they look.
Yeah.
Like, most everything. Next, go over summary of our design projects. We currently have 36 projects in design, estimated at a value of over $110 million. Be featuring nine. Our projects, these projects can also be found on the Public Works webpage. The Cabrillo Boulevard Project. We're making good progress on this. The final design has been completed, and we're awaiting confirmation from Caltrans that the construction can remain on schedule in September. We're meeting all the milestones that Caltrans has set for us, and so we believe that we'll be able to stay on that schedule.
Mr. Kelly, you're saying construction's going to start in September of this year?
Yes.
I've heard some concerns from some of the artists in the Sunday Art Show. Does your department have public meetings to let people know? Or how do you let the businesses and other stakeholders in the area know what's happening and how they'll be affected during construction?
Well, as you know, this project has been designed for some time, and so we've been meeting with them for some time, including the artists, as well as the Sterns Werf merchants and other merchants in the area. So, we're all anxious just to get this thing started and built. And the beauty of starting and the focus and our push to start this fall in particular is that it will, the completion of the work, which will be about two years, will coincide with the completion of the plan, completion of the Entrada Project.
So, there were different factors that, that were impacting?
The biggest factor is, you know, some vagaries of the statewide funding and federal funding formulas, et cetera. But we believe, like I noted earlier, that we're meeting those requirements. And we definitely want to press to get this done, and we have recently completed our right-of-way acquisition efforts, as you're familiar with, which was a big, big issue to resolve. And now, we're just waiting for confirmation from Caltrans.
Thank you.
Another project in the area is the Mason Street Bridge, and it also is planned to start in September and take a little over a year and a half, two years. It will be designed such that one of the first items of work will be to relocate Kimberly over here so we can widen the bridge. This building at 15 West Mason Street will be gone. However, there'll be, it'll be replaced with a widened channel that, of course, to help the flood control or reduce probabilities of flooding. And what's left over, which is a little triangular piece here, will be what we call an expanded habitat zone, which was, goes a lot of the way back to the conception of the Lower Mission Creek Project, that we worked closely with Creeks to design and HLC's approval. Another bridge will be starting is the, but it'll be starting next fall, and that's the Cota Street Replacement Project. And this is also tied in with the Lower Mission Creek Project. Then I'm going to two, two more bridges that are just starting design, the De La Guerra, and then in a minute, Gutierrez. And we've had neighborhood meetings and initial design review meetings, and we are planning to have future meetings to confirm the design and get the consensus from all interested parties. Based on the input received and conceptual designs repair, conceptual designs that had been prepared, we're on target for construction in spring of 2016. And as I noted, the Gutierrez Bridge is on the same schedule. This is parking lot number three, and it recently, and it is to do some American with Disabilities improvements, improve disability access there. That's a long-term project that the Parking Fund has been doing to improve handicap access or disability access throughout all the city's parking lots. And it has received the HLC approval recently, and is planning to go out to bid in the very near future. And here is a long-anticipated project. It's the West Downtown Lighting Phase 2. This was just recently funded by the city, by the city, about $1.3 million. And this part of the city, between Haley down to the freeway in Chapala, was funded several years ago by the redevelopment agency. And so now, we're finishing this neighborhood between Haley and Ortega with the same pedestrian lighting, et cetera. Haley, of course, is a pedestrian corridor with pedestrian lighting. And here's a picture of, on Bass Street, with we photoshopped in one of the headlights. This is a future highway safety improvement project, where the city's been quite successful in getting these grants and continue to look for more. And this particular case, we were awarded safety grant for five intersections at State Street, at Caye, Colorado, State at Islay, State at Pedregosa, Cabrillo at Anacapa, and Cabrillo at Corona del Mar, for the installation of very similar designs that we've installed on Milpis at Ortega recently, and then also at other locations down, down Cabrillo. And this construction is started, slated to start in late 2014.
Mr. Kelly? The final configuration of that particular crosswalk, when you said like the Milpis improvements, what do you mean pedestrian refuge islands, that type of thing, flashers?
Yeah, yes, and appropriately designed curb extensions and pedestrian refuge.
And will that happen concurrently with the bridge project, or is that, how's that timing work?
The timing will work, and this is a lot of coordination with Caltrans. We'll be able to build for all but the Cabrillo and Anacapa intersection. And then, once the bridge is built, then we'll come back and build what's planned now, the Anacapa intersection. Because we have to have, because we're closing half of Cabrillo to build the bridge, maintaining one lane in each direction. If we put in permanent curb extensions at Anacapa, it will complicate the temporary traffic control. So, we'll do the majority of the project, get permission from Caltrans to delay the Anacapa project, and then come back and finish the Anacapa project. Is the plan.
Thank you.
All right. This is the tertiary filtration replacement. This is the technology from many years ago for the city's first reclaimed water project. And the tertiary filtration building will be replaced with a complete new system, and that item will be coming before the council in the very near future. This will replace the existing filter complex for the discharge water, taking the discharge water from Alastero. Instead of discharging it into the ocean, it'll go through the tertiary treatment and become reclaimed water, which is replacement irrigation water. The new system will provide improved, reliable recycling water, plus allow more efficient operations and maintenance. Construction is slated to start later this, prior to summer, and is anticipated to take approximately one year. So, here is a summary of a graphic illustration of the amount of capital construction between all the funds. For this first two quarters, most of it was in the water fund, in particular, like I noted, the Cater project. And then a significant amount of all that was grants, and much of that was the Creeks project. And then, other little slivers, so you can see the cities leveraging our capital very well. And here's a little historical graph of our completed capital projects last year. You may remember, I came back, and a lot of this was because the airport terminal, we were close to $100 million. This year, we'll, we expect to complete almost up to $60 million. And to wrap it up, we have a video.
The bridges over Lower Mission Creek were originally built at a time when the car and the carriage were kings, and pedestrians and bicyclists weren't even an afterthought. When the city began replacing these century-old bridges in 2009, it made sure that all modes of transportation were addressed.
The bridges they're replacing are close to 100 years old, and they were designed to the standard of the time. Our new bridges will be designed to the current standard, which includes better pedestrian capacity, more bicycle capacity, and also to meet our discretionary review board's aesthetics, which I think can be reflected in the bridge that we're sitting on right now, has certainly the Santa Barbara flair for aesthetics.
The most recent replacement project to be completed is the Chapala Street Bridge. Not only is this new bridge stronger structurally, safer for all users, and aesthetically pleasing, it also accommodates the neighborhood.
In terms of pedestrian improvements, this bridge, it directs the pedestrians where they need to go. The old bridge was, kind of didn't have sidewalks, and it was confusing, and so this bridge enhances that walkability of the neighborhood. We've also added street lighting, which helps at night, and, as well as a couple little landscape areas.
The bridges are also being completed in coordination with the Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project, which aims to improve flood conditions and capacity during heavy rain events.
In 1995, we had the flood of record, which we were under a fair depth of water right here. And what a lot of people don't remember also is that in '98 and in 2005, this area was also flooded. The existing channel has a capacity of about an eight-year event. So, with the channel and the new bridges, we'll have a capacity somewhere between a 20- and 25-year event. So, the probability of flooding will be significantly reduced by all these bridges.
The primary improvement for habitat is opening up the creek. Like I said, the old Chapala Street right-of-way, the city wasn't using that space of the bridge, and so we removed that footprint of the bridge and opened up for views of, for the creek for people, as well as for the habitat, for sunlight, for plants to grow and fish to thrive.
The next bridges up for replacement are the Mason Street and Cabrillo Boulevard Bridges.
This project is another piece of the puzzle for the Lower Mission Creek Project. It encompasses actually realigning Kimberly Street to widen the creek, and then the replacement of the bridge. And then we'll also be doing another small piece of channel wall for the county of Santa Barbara as part of the project.
Being on such a busy thoroughfare, the Cabrillo Boulevard Bridge has been reconfigured three times before, with the last work being done in 1984. Construction activities and road closures are being coordinated to minimize neighborhood disruption, but some impacts will occur.
You know, construction's never easy, and a bridge construction is complicated, it's noisy, it can get dusty, and so I really want to appreciate and thank the local neighbors- And so I really want to appreciate and thank the local neighbors and businesses of the area, and even the people who need to get around. The streets were closed for a while. It was disruptive. I'm very pleased that the, all the team that came together was able to complete the bridge a month ahead of schedule. So that really helped, I think, in the neighborhood impacts. And I hope they feel that the end product is much better off than where we started.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you to City TV crew. They always do an excellent job.
It was very good. Thank you. Do we have questions for Mr. Kelly? Everybody's happy with your work, it seems like. And no members of the public have anything to say? Do we need a vote, Mr. Armstrong? We've just, we're happy to receive your report, Mr. Kelly. Thank you. Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports. And it looks like Councilmember Hotchkiss has something for us.
I do. Thank you, Madam Protem Mayor. Or Mayor Protem, excuse me. I went to the Matif meeting, it was like three weeks ago, I guess now, and they had a councilperson from Ventura there, along with our new city attorney, who had basically written all the ordinances there that were in attempt to control excess liquor on the streets and being sold and how that was written. None of those things that we have feared in the past occurred and they never got challenged by the, any outside organization, and have been apparently quite successful, according to the city council member, in curbing liquor problems on the street and in the bars. So I look forward to working with Ariel when he gets here on those matters.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Ms. Mario. I attended the most recent Airport Commission meeting, and ironically, we had just heard from the consultant about our traffic loads and we had been at or slightly above in most of our efforts to impale passengers. But unfortunately, as Ms. Jean's announced to us yesterday, that we will be losing the American Airlines service to LA on May 1st. So we wait to see if we can replace that. We have an active consultant that's trying to market and bring our airline service back up to where we'd like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I attended a couple of events related to our youth population. The Youth Council met yesterday, and their chair, Kayla Simmons, is going to Washington, DC, as part of the National League of Cities Conference on Youth Issues. I'm jealous of her. I've never gotten to go to that one. And then I attended a Girl Scouts forum. The Girl Scouts are focusing on how to service Latino families, and in particular, girls and young Latinas. And that's it for that section. We have a closed session, Madam Clerk?
Item 12, Conference with Real Property Negotiators.
And we won't make a report afterwards? So the meeting is adjourned?